We're live and we're recording.
This is the meeting of the Selectmen for June 1st, 2020 at 3:00 PM. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com. And members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed via livestream at WHCA.TV. It will subsequently be broadcast on YouTube.com. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States.
America.
And to the Republic. Which stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
And we'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. And two items on the agenda, old business, discuss the Whitman Hansen Regional Agreement Amendment. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, there has been a lot of discussion about this. We've been going back and forth with local council regarding the original presentation from the school committee approximately two weeks ago. In reviewing it today with council, the concerns that caused her to propose amending the amendment relate to clarity and accuracy in presenting what is to be the process today and going forward. The initial assessment is an assessment by agreement to be followed by the statutory method of assessment beginning 2022 and forward. The problems that the initial proposal had included some unclear language and required clarification on what happens going forward. So the, the agreement language that has been presented to the board addresses all of those issues. And if you refer to Article, I believe it's Article 7, the town meeting warrant calls for a vote from the Board of Selectmen to accept the amended regional agreement. And I have to get to the right Article 7, I'm on P7. And identifies where the agreement can be viewed. There are two copies of the agreement posted on the website right now at Town Meeting Warrants. One is the original presentation from Whitman Hansen. The other is our recommended language that was received yesterday afternoon. The article, Article 7, should be voted with the additional language on line four following the website address and proposed amendment and inserting, "And it may be amended up to town meeting vote." That gives us in town meeting the ability to make any changes if we don't have uniform agreement with the school district and the town of Hanson. But enables us to put it on correction by town meeting. So when you vote to accept and post the print, that language, "And it may be amended up to town meeting vote," will be added through Article 7. If any amendment is necessary, it can be made on the floor.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, Kyle, I do. Frank, by the Board of Selectmen voting this warrant, as you explained it, not this particular item, this article, but the entire warrant. Does that mean that because we voted this warrant, that if I wanted to speak either for or against any particular item, I cannot?
You are not bound. This is not a collective bargaining issue where we've entered an agreement and now have to present it for approval after we've ratified it. This is a proposed amendment. We're all free to speak as we may choose.
On each.
On the merits, on the merits of the article. Bear in mind that our vote to accept this and the, and the budget for Whitman Hanson are conditioned on two things. One, that Hanson accept the amendment to the agreement. And two, that Hanson funds the appropriation that is the result of this agreement, which ratifies it and going forward commits us to a statutory assessment.
And that language in Article 7 basically took care of, I think, that letter or email from Christine Lynch last week that was brought up.
Correct. And, and it actually is conditioned on a vote that's not going to occur until July. So what we do sets stage. And if it's acceptable and voted in July, then it's as if we met together and did it. If not, then, then we're not in agreement and we go forward with what we need to, to resolve the issue.
Well, if I may, Kyle.
Yes.
At town meeting, by town meeting accepting Article 7, that means that town, that the town meeting accepted the 50-50 proposition split for the one year. True?
Right, if, if, if the town voted positively for Article 7, it wouldn't mean that the town is accepting the 50-50 split and as well as the move to statutory next year and every year thereafter.
Right, okay. And that was part of the problem with the language because it really isn't a 50-50. It's 50-50 of the difference. It's.
So are you, are you saying that the number in Article 2 on that line item, line 175, is wrong?
No.
It needs to be.
It's an agreed, it's an agreed upon assessment. And it's 50% of something, but not everything that's included in that agreement. It's a. I'm, I'm complicating.
I'm sorry, Dan, that, to be, try to be clear on this. The money on line 175 of Article 2 is the, the correct amount. What was, what was a problem was the language in the amended agreement was kind of fuzzy. And what our lawyer did was to make adjustments to that, that proposed amendment is a, our proposed amendment clarifies it.
Yes, I understand that, Kyle, but as I say, I'm looking at the, the numbers. And the previous number for the increase at a statutory method, not the 50-50, was 758, an increase of 758,000. With the statutory method, I will, I mean, with the 50-50 regional one-year agreement, it goes up a little, a little over $2 million, uh, $200,000.
$200,000, right.
Correct.
Right, that being said, if in fact town meeting doesn't approve the 50-50 split number, but the finance committee, you know, they're going to come with the 758. That's, that's what they're going to be voting on, that's going to be voted down and then the new one.
Dan, if that happens, if that happens in all likelihood, the amendment will fail, the budget will fail, and we will end up on a statutory assessment by law.
There you go, okay.
I don't want to overthink it.
Right, okay.
This is an opportunity for the two towns to come together and agree on something that transitions us in one year.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that at town meeting.
I'm sure.
That's all I'll say. I'll be nice today, Frank. I will be nice.
I did something similar to that, Dan, years and years ago. The, I was on the school committee, actually, I was the chair of the school committee, and the school committee voted to cut a team of teachers at the middle school and to close, I think it was the Park Avenue School. They did that in concert with the finance committee right before town meeting. I wasn't able to be at that meeting because I was teaching. So I came to town hall and I found out that I had to announce that they were cutting this stuff. And so I got up and I said, well, as the chairman, I have to tell you this, but as a private citizen, I have to tell you that I think it's a really bad idea. And I went on and on and on and on. And that, that town meeting actually rejected that idea, those cuts, and voted the school department budget. That made me such a popular guy that at the next school committee meeting, there was a motion to change, change the chairperson.
Yeah, well.
And afterward discussion, they decided not to do it, but it was, just be prepared, Dan.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Dan, your voice went out.
Sometimes you can say what you want and a lot of people don't like it.
Regardless, a lot of people won't, don't like it, there's two sides to every story. I just want the people to understand exactly what they're voting for.
And it's our job to present. Extra $211,000 to save 29, 39 positions, Dan.
That's what you're saying. I don't believe that.
I, I believe, I believe Randy.
That's what the school committee told us.
Of course.
Well, that's actually, that's the problem. I can't, I, I can't say what I, what I should be saying now, because sometimes when you believe the school committee, it doesn't work out that well. But never mind. Any other questions on what Frank has just been talking about? I, I think what our lawyer has done is a, in draft, in drafting the language for Article 7, has taken care of the questions that we had last week.
Yeah.
That there was a, there was an issue there that if the, according to Christine Lynch, that if both towns passed the amendment, but one of the towns didn't pass the budget, then the commissioner could use the amended language to the regional agreement to assess us. And that would have been really in our, not in our favor at all. So what, what she did when she made this, when she made Article 7 contingent upon the other town, Hanson, agreeing to the, to the amendment and also passing the budget, it took care of that. And I think that was a question that one of the finance committee members, Kathleen O'Tina, brought up when she brought to our attention the email from, the, the letter from Christine Lynch to the school committee. So. Anything else, Frank, that you want to talk about right now?
Well.
I think I'm talking about the regional agreement, no?
I, I don't know that there's anything else in our, you know, warrant that, that wasn't really clear. Unfortunately, it's lengthy. And, and half of the warrant is one article, the, the adoption of the new floodplain district. And Randy has some news that may make that easy for us. We may be able to vote that prior to town meeting and pass it over.
So I actually just got off the phone with Representative Cutler before the meeting started. Last Thursday, the House passed some legislation that, that would actually give the Board of Selectmen by a two-thirds vote the ability to pass the, the map, maps, Frank?
Yes, flood maps.
According to him, one likely will hit the Senate sometime this week. And fingers crossed, possibly could see Governor Baker's desk into the week, beginning of next. So we may have some options. But if that was the pass, we probably could extend, depending on the situation we're in with COVID.
Right.
May give us an option.
The, the reason for all of this and the reason for its importance is the federal government has expressed no willingness to delay its implementation of mid-July. If we don't pass the proposed, not proposed, but, but the identified floodmaps that apply to Whitman, we would have to necessarily be excluded from the National Flood Plan. In other words, people in Whitman who live near a flood zone would not be able to purchase flood insurance. And that's, that's the overriding issue we're facing right now on the warrant. If we don't vote that, it causes substantial harm to anyone who may want to mortgage your property or re-mortgage your property or even sell a property in a flood zone. So it's, that's what's driving it, just to make it clear. And, but for that, I would have said, let's delay our meeting.
Frank, has the planning board looked at this?
Yes, they're having a hearing. Are they the first or the six?
I think it's tonight.
It may be tonight. They're, the planning board has it, they've, it's gone through the Board of, you know, the, the.
Conservation, maybe?
Bylaw Study Committee.
Okay.
Ironically, conservation doesn't get involved in this.
Unbelievable, you would think so.
But it's a federal law and it's a bylaw. So really, they don't care for conservation things, decisions. They don't even care what we think, actually. But we have to vote it. So that'll be, that'll be our first electronic hearing. I'm looking forward to seeing how that plays out.
Okay, any, anything else on the, the warrant? The, we need, actually, we need a motion to vote to issue the town meeting warrant. Someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the town meeting warrant.
Hey, that's Dan.
For a second? Okay, Dan, Dan, you're, Brian, you're second again?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, questions on the town meeting warrant then? More discussion?
Randy has.
Yes, Randy.
Frank, just going to the funding sources, Article 29.
Yeah.
Collective bargaining agreement, you have that coming out of two different sources.
Your Article 29 is 59889, and if you go to our worksheet, the chart, that one should be coming out of the reserve appropriation ambulance.
Right, you also have it coming out of free cash. I, I didn't know if, just a typo or.
I spent so much time on this over the weekend, I was leery-eyed. Let me see, 5959. You're right, it, it's coming out of the free cash column because it's being funded through reserve appropriation. The, the, the other articles, which are 30, 31, 32, and 33 relate to bargaining with the other town unions. We don't have an amount and the article simply reflects a sum of money because we have not met and agreed on a extension of the contract. I have provided some funding allowance for that, which is also in the works, but it's not something we would be voting until unless we have an agreement.
All right, so is that a fire agreement, is that free cash or ambulance? And that was my question.
It's ambulance.
All right, because you have it free cash and, and.
Yep, when we moved it to ambulance, I didn't remove it from the free cash.
Gotcha.
Hey, anyone else? Any questions on Article 2, which is also part of the town, town meeting warrant?
I do, I do, if I may.
Before you do, Dan, if I can just say, Article 2 is still under review. The finance committee has not made its recommendations and it won't be posted until they've completed their review. But this is the draft that I've presented.
Okay, that being said, line item 244, I've never seen that before. Vacation paid for terminated employees?
Yes, every year for the last several, at least the last four, we have struggled to come up with money to pay for employees who retire or terminate. I've estimated the value of that expense on a, on an approximation basis. So that's simply money that is available if needed to pay out earned but unpaid time.
But the way it's written, it sounds like we're terming with, we're laying off people that work for the town.
Well, no, terminated simply means they've ended their employment with the.
I know that, but I mean, at first look at it, you think we terminated somebody.
Well, I wouldn't want to put who resigned because then if somebody quits, they're going to say, we can't use it.
Well, or something, or I don't know.
Somebody's terminated for cause. So it's, 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 it's intended to provide the, some stability. The auditors have been recommending for the last several years that we provide a mechanism to meet those expenditures that are unforeseen. Because what happens, as was the example this, this fiscal year is we had a senior person retire with significant accrued time. We didn't have a means to pay for it other than the salary line. So we had to draw down on the salary, sal, salary line. Had we not had an opportunity to make a subsequent appropriation, we would have had no funds to pay that employee. And that's happened a couple of times in the past. So we've taken steps to reduce the amount of accrued and unpaid vacation by setting limits. But even within those limits, there is some potential for cost. And that's all I'm trying to do now is to allow for it.
Okay. And I have a couple of other questions. On, on some of the line items, it has employees, it has a list of a position, but it's minus.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Each year for employees who are covered under collective bargaining agreement, we calculate in budget for the salary for each of those positions. From year to year, because we're on a July 1 to June 30th year, the number of workdays changes.
Okay.
Might be 259, it might be 262. So when you see a reduction from one year to the next, one of two things have happened. Either we've hired someone new and the salary's lower, or we have less workdays in the coming fiscal year. And of course, 2020 was a leap year, so potentially many of our employees have one less workday.
Okay, and second of all, I, I see the increase for the flight department because we negotiated a contract with them. But all the other unions are zero-based because we do not have a contract with them.
Correct.
Are we going to add to, into mitigation, you know, into contract negotiating with those unions? And if we plan on it, should we have money aside so we can, you know, we don't have to have a special town meeting to come back and get, you know?
The, the answer is yes to both questions. Yes, we have reached out to negotiate with those unions. Our labor council has sent letters to each of the union representatives. And we have made allowances in our total funding to pay for reasonable costs should we negotiate. We can't set a number because that would be bargaining in bad faith.
Right, yeah, exactly, okay.
Sorry, this is it, we're not willing to talk.
And for the, for everything that's in Article 2 and everything on the town warrant, is it all within the levy limit?
No.
What are we under? I mean, what are we over?
We're, we're over the levy limit. We're using, we're using free cash and we're using appropriated ambulance, reserve appropriation ambulance funds in order to subsidize the total cost for the budget. We have a number of items that we're funding. Let me just find the right article for you.
I mean, the ambulance fund is, is reoccurring receipts. But I'm talking about most of the items that are one-time spending like capital costs, we're taking it out of either free cash or wherever. Right? To pay for those. But I'm talking about ongoing, ongoing expenses that are reoccurring bills on a yearly basis. Are we within the levy limit on those? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, Dan, the answer is no. The, the cost, the cost of capital expenditures and the cost of other operations drive up the total levy. So the total levy, if you look at your worksheet, I believe it's page two. The total levy with all expenditures
Right.
Available levy is 35,659. And the 774 is what comes out of reserve appropriation 2020 ambulance funds in free cash. If you want to see that breakdown, go to Article. Believe it's Article 8. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $640,302 from FY 2020 reserve appropriation ambulance receipts account and to appropriate 133702 from available free cash, said funds used to reduce the amount of money to be raised by taxation for fiscal year 21.
Okay, then how do we cover that next?
As I've said for the last two years, the budget we build this year is going to require an override next year to continue to fund both our levy and capital plants. I have been saying that, I don't know, three years?
Yes, Dan.
We had the means and ability to do a budget this year without doing an override. When we announced that and, and I know Randy and Justin were part of that committee, we made it very clear that in 2022, we were going to need to adjust the levy base in order to continue to move forward. This budget spent a significant amount of money in capital. And I think you've been involved in.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
But we're not going to be able to continue to do it without raising revenue.
Well, I think we've gone above and beyond as far as our capital, what we're spending on capitals this year than what we may not spend next year. That being said, it may be enough to cover it.
Right.
Don't know, we'll have to see.
Uh, Brian, did I saw your hand up?
You're muted, I can't hear him.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Brian. But.
Probably your microphone on the computer because you are unmuted.
Better yell louder.
Check lower right, there should be a little symbol for sound to make sure that's turned up.
Now he disappeared.
Maybe he's just joining again.
Uh, now he's muted. Let's see if I can unmute you, Brian.
Yes, we should be up. No, you didn't.
Unmute. There we go.
Now, still not getting it, Brian.
Brian, you like that really bad ad for lip sync?
Peace.
You could type in the chat if you, if you want, um, or you could use your phone and just call the other number and you can participate through both.
Well, while we wait, um, I guess I could talk on the, uh, the Madden recommendation. So Randy might be able to correct me if I'm, I'm off here, but I believe the projected budget for this year from, um, Mr. Madden last summer, uh, last fall was about $60,000 that we need to find outside of the levy. Um, that's grown to a couple hundred thousand dollars now. Um, and part of that is the COVID-related shortfalls. We're expecting, Frank, what's the latest estimates? Three to $500,000 and?
I think we're 600,000 low.
600,000 low?
I don't think it'll, I, I don't think it'll be reoccurring, but it's going to take us a year to recover.
Yeah.
Maybe two years to see those numbers come back.
Yeah. So while we're dipping into one-time funds, we're seeing a, a one-time loss in revenue, a pretty significant one-time loss in revenue. So some of this will rebound, um.
Right.
But yes, as Frank said, the projection for the next five years also included, uh, need for an override.
Hate that word.
Hey, Brian.
That's better, huh?
I think I can hear you now, Brian.
There you go.
I could for a minute.
Yeah, yeah. I'm on my phone now.
Oh, good.
How weird.
Do you remember what you wanted to say?
Um, let me think. Uh, yes, uh, I, I was concerned about the, um, what, what Frank was saying. I know that, uh, we've discussed this before about the impending override in the future. Let's, I don't want to get into it too deeply, but, uh, doomsday scenario, let's say next year that they, uh, nobody, uh, approves an override. How, what kind of devastation is that going to be to the town, um, budget and, uh, operations?
Forty positions.
It all depends.
Low tech.
Our growth. Uh, if we have good growth, it would be less of a hit than, than if our growth was typical or under that. I have every reason to believe growth is going to be better. But I, you know, right now I can't document it based on, uh, uh, the, the assessments to date. So we're going to find out probably in November, how right or wrong we are on new growth. I suspect it would be higher, but particularly under these circumstances, we can't count and overestimate because there's nothing else to protect us. Should we do that?
So, um, if we raise the bar higher this year, it, it will cause us harm maybe next year.
Well, even with, even with the, um, numbers that we were just using, as Randy pointed out, I double counted one appropriation, which is good. I'd rather do it that way than the other way.
Right.
Um, but let me find it. Collective bargaining. So we're projecting to have free cash of 763,000 to carry over. That will then become 832,000 to start the year. That's not counting the free cash that we may end up with in fiscal 21. So it, it's not so dire that, that we're, we're, um, throwing all caution to the wind and saying, let's spend money. But there's good reason to be concerned and I think this is a good time to address that because it's going to be clear going forward. As Carl always puts it, town has to decide what kind of community it wants to be.
Right.
We're going to offer the options and town meeting is going to make the decisions.
Okay.
Anybody else have any, uh, questions or comments on the?
Randy does.
Mr. Chairman.
Town meeting warrant. When, Randy?
Uh, okay, just circling back to 244, Frank. That was kind, kind of weird. Do, do we know? We definitely have some, uh, amendments coming out of 244?
I'm, I'm sorry. What is the 244?
Uh, the, the vacation.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, go to vacation. Let me find that. You were talking about line number 244. I was trying to think of dollars.
Oh, no.
No. Um, we're, we're, we're going to have a couple. Um, I, I can probably identify without asking anyone, maybe $20,000. But there may be other people who are close to retiring, who may choose to retire mid-year. And that's going to up the ante. But that would be my estimation, the most we would spend.
All right. And then, um, line 191, Frank, the, the stormwater management.
Yes.
Uh, that's a five-year plan, right?
Yes, and that's year three, I believe.
Okay. And does that go, I know there's a matrix for that somewhere, but i- is that dropping next year?
No, it goes up a little more next year.
Okay.
But it'll drop in the fifth year.
Okay. And that's.
Assuming everything goes on this, on a schedule.
And that's, uh, like a mandated program, right?
Yes. And that's the reason we put it in Article two. It's a recurring expense and we should be recognizing it in, just like debt, we should be looking at it, recognizing, including it in the initial calculations rather than treating it as an head-on and an article.
That was FMA. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, um, I'll call for a vote on issuing the town meeting, the town meeting warrant. Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
And I will circulate the warrant physically to each of the board members for signature. We'll confirm when you're available. And then we will get it posted within the next day or two.
Okay, great. Um, that actually exhausts our, uh, exhausts our agenda. Unless you have any updates on, um, town meeting of, uh, June 22nd, uh, is it?
Still holding my breath waiting.
Are we still, are we still meeting in the driveway that's in Whitman of the schools or are we meeting in the gym?
We're wait, we're waiting for, uh, the, uh, Senate to complete and forward its bill to the governor for signature. Um, I was encouraged by the uh, governor's secretary when I called there Friday and she actually went in, looked at his desk and said, no, it's not on his desk. And it's, uh, but it's probably in transit and will have it this week. Uh, it just seems.
Hope it wasn't in that mailbox on, uh, Tremont Street.
Oh, yeah.
It was sitting next to the car that was, that was, uh.
I thought, you know, it, it's really amazed me. Um, and I know that we're all working under different circumstances today. And I imagine it's very difficult for the House and Senate, who are by and large probably not that, um, acclimated to doing things electronically to have to change the way they do things. So it slowed things down. But a couple of these bills are essential to local governance. And I'm just surprised that it's taken so long to bring them forward. But these little bills for individual interest have all been flowing through. There's 85 uh, laws that have been passed in, in the 20 special act section. So I'm just kind of wondering.
Good. I guess, uh, motion to adjourn would be in order if someone's so inclined.
So moved by Dan?
Second, Brian.
And Brian.
Okay, um, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll vote yes. Thank you very much, guys, for coming together on Monday afternoon to do this.
Wash your hands.
Thank you.
Yeah, wash your hands. Cover your, cover your mouth. Okay.
Yeah.
Goodbye and good luck.
Bye.
See you next week.